Okay.
Yeah, we'll wait. I got one, thank you.
I did, yeah, sure did. Yeah, yeah.
How you doing?
How can I do it? No, I got it. I'm just saying if we had a Reverend here, I'd go ahead and give him the opportunity. Yeah, I'd do it. I mean, I'd do it, ain't no problem. I'd say if we had a Reverend here, and we got a Reverend Newton on the agenda. We need to be here in a minute.
Yeah.
All right, ready? I want to welcome everybody to the April fifteenth meeting. It's six oh three. If I could get approval of the agenda this time.
So move.
Second.
Second, on favor, I?
Uh.
If I don't stand, I'll do the implication of pledge. Everyone bow your head. Dear Lord, around this room is many blessings. This community is a blessing, and we can't thank you enough. Dear Lord, we lift our community up. We live in our state, also our country, because you know what our needs are. There's so many people in this, in our community that need your healing touch, that you know who those people are, and we lift all those up because you're the one who can heal all, the doctor of all, healer of all. Dear Lord, I ask that you be with the board of commissioners as we make the decision on behalf of this county to be pleasing to you. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Let the light under the United States of America, into the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Move all the way down to the consent agenda and approval of the minutes. We had a work session on April first, along with our first Tuesday, April first, and executive session. If y'all had opportunity, review the minutes. I entertain a motion, please.
So move.
Second.
Second, on favor, I?
Uh.
All right, we have a visitor by. Is Reverend Alexander Newton here?
Yes.
Good evening.
Thank you for your service, Reverend.
I came because I had been in the street with the property that was located on Tom Patterson X State, off of Patterson Road, now known as Newton Park. I own Newton Park. That was sixteen acre tract of land that 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 lit, that that joins my property and the railroad. The railroad brought six acres of the property. It was done in the eighteen hundreds, but Tom Patterson, who owned the two hundred and six acres for the, for the black folks over there, owned the ten acres. They needed the sixteen acres of land to put the side track on. Now, before I were born, I was taught about this land by Mr. John O. Roberts. He was the one that surveyed the land and taught me how to survey and how to, you know, explain it to, to my mother. My mother couldn't read or write, but she left me with the property. I cut the timber on the ten acres, and the railroad came after me. And it had lawyers after lawyer after lawyer. I got all kinds of papers. I didn't bring all the papers because we don't have time, but I'm willing to come back, showing that they owned, owned, owned the sixteen acres. But Mr. John R. Roberts was the surveyor for Norfolk Southern, Central Georgia, all three railroad tracks that went on that same track. And that's why Amtrak is not coming to Macon now, is because I owned that ten acres that were left to me for my granddaddy and my mother there. And Am, Am, Central Georgia and Norfolk Southern was, was trying to take the land from me. So I had Mr. John R. Roberts to survey the land. I got it, I got the deeds until they started taking them from my courthouse. And I'm up here today because when I placed the deeds, this is my wife for sixty-five years, I placed the deeds in Beuph, in Jones County courthouse. I placed them there twice, the deeds. When Mr. John R. Roberts gave me old deeds, I put them in the post, right here in the courthouse, before this was built, at the courthouse. I never could find them. I came back three or four times, but soon as I cut the property, they took the deeds off the records up here. And that's why I'm up here today, because I couldn't find the deeds. But I do have a deed that my mother gave me, that I do own the property. And I did cut the timber, and I paid the timber taxes of Jones County for cutting the timber, every stump. I'm a minister. I'm a Baptist preacher and pastor, and for the A M and C M U churches, I am a, I am a bishop. I can't, I can't lie about no money. I want this county to have the property because of the people, because of the track being where it is. No pastor train come to Macon because there's not a side track within ten miles of Macon. That's why the Thomas Center got opened. Amtrak will not come to Macon until there's a side track. And I don't want to be left with my name holding up that that side track not going to be put there. So whatever can be done about it, that's why I'm up here today.
Mr. Newton, I think I talked to you several months ago. We talked, you, you called me several months ago, I think it was. You, you and I had a conversation probably six, eight months ago, if you don't remember, where you, you, I was asked to give you a call.
I, I, I don't have a hearing any.
Okay, I, I feel your pain. I have been hearing these too. You and I, you and I spoke probably six, eight months ago. You and I spoke about six, eight months ago about this. Yeah, no, you, we talked to, I talked to you on the phone.
Yes.
And you, you asked to have somebody contact you from the county, and I, I contacted you then. And I think I told you at that time you needed to get with an attorney to see if they could clean this up for you.
Yeah.
Because right now it shows it's not Norfolk, Norfolk Southern. I did, I did look that up.
Yeah, you did look that up.
And, but I think I advised you too that you needed to get with an attorney to try to get this straightened out for yourself.
When I'm here to open today, I just, that wacko operator, because my, me and my wife both been sick. I was born with rheumatic fever and polio.
Mm-hmm.
I didn't go to school. I learned what I learned by just homeschooling and taking time out to leave to study. But I'm a bad man when it comes down to being right. I know how to be right. I know how to be real.
Mm-hmm.
So I, I come for help from you all, what we can do to get this straightened out, so we can get the side track to go into Macon. I need the money. And all that property, all the property my mom gave me, I got fifty grand children and forty great-grand children, and I hadn't given them anything. And that ten acres of land that they, that they got tied up is all the land I got to give to my family. I live, my house top of Philly. I show you, I got a house. All my children were born there, four of them the other ago, and the top one fell in on me. And my wife live with my daughter on Newton Park, on a double-wide trail. I need some, I want, I need to sell, sell the land and get, get it out of my hands, and whatever we can do about it to get it straightened out, and I can make it go on with the rest of my family. I haven't given my children nothing.
Well, to, but to straighten it out, whatever's happened with your property, the county can't do. That's between you and Norfolk Southern.
I, I, I understand, but I, I came to y'all, but this is the county that I live in.
Right, but we can't get involved in private property disputes. You need to, there's a couple attorneys in town, local attorneys, that handle real estate and property issues. You need to call one of them, and they can help you figure out what's going on with your deeds, and I can write down their names and numbers for you.
Well, do that. I can do that. I can start there.
Yes, sir.
I will start there.
Yes, sir.
But I want to make sure I'm on the, on the right track.
Sure, and like I said, I talked with you and told you that you need to get legal. And.
I'm going to write that down for you, and I'll bring it over to you, okay?
All right.
And as soon as possible, I get on. I have it up tomorrow.
Yes, sir.
All right, well, she'll get you some numbers. Thank you. Ms. Lisa Mullis, you've got us, Jones County Arts. I guess all this crowd follows you in here?
Yes.
And we would love to have you every first and third, please be in here to fill this room up.
Come sing for you. They're super talented kids. Um, as you know, my name is Lisa Mullis. I was just going to tell you, I have a couple of people, a couple of my kids, and my husband going to share a little brief that kind of goes with our presentation.
Sure.
But my name is Lisa Mullis, and I am the director of Jones County Arts. And I do appreciate you, you know, letting me come in and tell you a little bit about our program, and sort of what our vision and what we are looking at for the future of arts in our community. In two thousand sixteen, we've got some pictures up here, so this is one of our shows. You can go to the next slide. This was our very first show in two thousand sixteen. And it's so funny to look at these pictures, because most of those kids are in college. Some of them even graduated college now, so that makes me feel old. And we had about fifteen kids in our first few productions, including this one, which is Seussical. And over the past nine years, we've produced twenty-six different musicals with over two hundred students who have been involved in our program, probably more than that. I didn't even count them, but it's a lot. It's probably way more than that. The last few shows, we generally average between thirty-five and forty kids now, though. I think Little Mermaid, we had forty-eight, and that stage is not big enough for forty-eight children. I'm just going to tell you that right now. They were laughing because they were the people in it. Our program has grown so much over the last nine years. Our level of skill and professionalism has grown and grown and grown. So super proud of our kids and parents and everybody who have been involved in that. We thank you so much for, first of all, allowing us to be part of the recreation department. So nine years ago, when we brought that before you, you were like, great. And so that gives us the opportunity to use the Knox Center, which has been wonderful, and it's been a blessing for us. And I hope we have been to that space as well, because we really try and help maintain it and police it and do what needs to be done to keep it a nice space, because it really is. The county employees, I will just, I want to tell them, they are awesome. So Bert back here has been fantastic, and also just the maintenance guys, like, you know, I can text one of them. There was a chair that was broken, and like, literally, the next day, they had it fixed. So they are wonderful. You know, just anything, they come in there and make sure that everything is working and ready for the shows, and we appreciate that so very much. Also, my other great big thank you is the lighting system. So, well, we're going to go through, and we're going to show you just some, our wonderful cast. So these are some of our earlier productions that we did, Wizard of Oz. And then these are some of the more recent ones that we did, so some of them, some of these kids are actually out here behind you, so, are in front of you. So the lighting has been wonderful. If you'll go to, yes, so you can look. So this is our latest production. We just did, Fill It On The Roof. That backdrop was so awesome because the lights that you guys put in have been awesome, because now it lights up, like, we can see the whole cast now, and that's awesome. And also, that backdrop, different lights, because the lights that are on it, you can color, and they're all colorized. Where before, we only had white lights, and they weren't even on the backdrop, and they were just facing straight down. So we thank you so very much for getting that lighting system. Our shows, as you can tell, they have much professional, professionalism, and we can create scenes to enhance the show so much more, and that has been greatly used. And other things too, I ran lights for a couple things that we've done in there, and just being able to play with the lights, and everyone's like, wow, this is really cool. So it's provided, our church meets in there too, so I have fun, because most of the time I get to run the lights, so that's a lot of fun, too. Those lights are amazing, and it's just the first step on what we could do with that building. It is a great space, and I'd really like to see it used even more. So we are going to ask for your continued help to support our program, and not just our program, but cultural arts as a whole. This is way bigger than me and what we do. I want this, you know, when I'm no longer here and have less, left this earth or have, for some reason, decided that we need to move on from Jones County, I don't want it to die. I want it to continue. I want it to grow. I want it to be more than just, you know, what we do with the kids program. There's so much more that we can do. So I've heard people say, oh, come see Ms. Lisa's little shows. I can tell you right now, they are not little shows. As you can tell from these pictures, they can tell you out there, we are way more than little shows. When I was doing little shows at Turner Woods when my kids were in elementary school, yes, those were little shows. What we do are not, and some of you have seen them, you can attest to that. We probably rival and rank up there with some of the other community theaters in Macon and surrounding area. And I go to a lot of them, and I've seen them, I've been in them. I used to do stuff at Macon Little Theater. So I can attest that we are not little shows. So we have a couple of things, and this is why I'm here, immediate needs. The immediate need, biggest immediate need is.
The curtains?
Yes.
The curtains.
Yes, Wendy knows, because those curtains were there, weren't they, when you were in high school?
When I was in high school.
So if you've been in there, literally, I have them taped with gaffing tape. I have them pinned. At that, literally, we've had kids fall through them, so that is the biggest need. And I know that's already sort of being addressed, but, you know, they, they need to be done right. That is my biggest thing. They need to be done right, and, and by somebody who, that's what they do, is stage curtains. And we, we've talked to some people, and I know that Bert brought in somebody. I actually did not get to talk to them, so I'm not sure exactly, you know, if we're on the same page. I hope so. I think that will be helpful for, you know, for me and maybe some of the people that I work with and even know more about curtain stuff than I do, to make sure that they're, you know, the way they need to be. And so that's the biggest need. With that comes the projector, and that's one of the reasons that front curtain is ripped, because the projector screen is not, shouldn't be there. It should have never been put there. And when you open and close that curtain, it gets caught on it. And I know Julie's been up on the ladder, and she's shown it at least once. I think I've gotten up there too. And it, it's ripped again, so it's, you know, it opens, you can see right through the bottom. We try and hold it and all of that. You try and pull it up, over it, but that projector screen can't be there anymore. It's got to be, you know, when those were replaced, we probably need to flip-flop it and put a screen in the back, behind the black, back curtain. And then that way, it's only down and comes down when you open those. And then you'd project from the opposite direction, which also would be kind of nice, because then you could actually use the stage when the screen is down. And I know that's, some people might need to do that for something. I could actually use it for projected, you can do backdrops, projected backdrops as well. Not just, we do, I usually rent backdrops, but you can also project them as well. So that's something that's really important, as far as, you know, replacing those curtains. When we talked to the guy from Georgia Stage, he was like, you cannot have this here, because if you buy new curtains, it's just going to rip again. And I'm like, I'm aware. So, you know, we've tried to protect them and do what we can, but the rigging is all old and coming up off the floor. And I know we've, you know, screwed it back down again, but it's coming back up again. So that's probably the, the biggest immediate need, and these kids can attest to it as well. So just that front, the projector, projector turning around and also for our being able to replace those, all the way around, those black curtains all the way around as well. We looked at making a mid-stage traveler, which kind of, that way, if somebody else is using it for something, we could keep something back behind there, if somebody, another group. But it needs to go all the way off, so the track needs to extend out past that. So we put that in when I made all of the specs on what we needed. Bert has all of those, so if you need to look at them anytime, he's got them. Also, the other immediate need is space. After doing twenty-six shows, we have a lot of stuff. So I know, I'm aware that Haley told me that the chamber and the development authority is moving out of those two front offices. So I was looking at, as I was talking to Haley the other day, her office especially, because it doesn't have a window, possibly using, we use part of one of the rooms, but one of the rooms is also, like, they, we use it for nursery, for church. And so I, I don't have a room or a space that we can lock up that no, that no one goes into. And so all of our financial things, anything that's, you know, equipment, things that we don't want to walk off, I, I don't put it in there. They stay at my house most of the time. We did put the mics in there, just because I don't want the wear and tear. Traveling back and forth all the time, and they got tired of being in my dining room. So we just don't have a space that we can lock up, that we can keep financial stuff. It would be nice to have an office. And then also, I'm getting where I can't really keep the costumes in that back room. They get smelly, because that back room is not air-conditioned or heated or anything. And so especially in the summer when it's raining, it, they get really damp, and they do not smell good. So it would be nice to have a space that could be just for costume rooms, that's, you know, air-conditioned and climate-controlled, to be able to put that. So those are our biggest needs, are the curtains, and also, you know, space, long-term. So our vision, my long-term vision, is to actually turn that space into a cultural arts center. So if you will go to the next slide. Oh, that was my curtains. You can actually go past that one. The Plaza Arts Center. If you have never been there, go. It is awesome. So this is in Eatonton. They have, I talked to one of the guys who was one of the fundraisers that was part of that. So this is sort of my vision, and way bigger than me, but to me, the Knox Center is a perfect place to do that. We would love to see that space used, not just for our productions, but also things for adults. You know, maybe eventually do some adult shows. You could bring in different groups that perform. I know they do over there. You could have, I don't know, anything from a comedian to, you know, groups that play music. I mean, there's all kinds, the possibilities are endless. I would just love to see more cultural events, and that space used for those cultural events. You could do art shows, art camps, and I know the Boys and Girls Club is on one side, but if that was not there, maybe one day that could actually be a space for, you know, art, photography classes. You could have adult, you could have older adult classes too, and kids camp, that type of thing too. You could do photography, you could do dance, if there, whatever the interest is, there's just possibilities are endless. And then on the side, that our space is, I know the museum is in there. Not sure if there's a better space, space for that, especially with people. I mean, I've lived here thirty-three years, and I think I've been in there once, and I go past it. There's cool stuff in there. It'd be nice for people to be able to see it. That space would be great for a green room kind of thing, for us to get ready. You could put mirrors, you could put counters, because right now we have to use the other conference room that's in there. So there's just a lot of space in there that I feel like could be used very, very well for a cultural arts center. There's just so many different possibilities. And I feel like, you know, that is just going to provide more things, not just for kids, which I know that's a very important thing in our community. That's why we raised our kids here. We're a great place for raising kids. So it also is going to help a lot with being part of our community and some industrial development. So I'm going to pass the mic over to my husband, who is very, very much on that wavelength. A lot of you know him. In fact, probably most of you know him better than me. But he has been on both chamber board and industrial development since, I don't know, since they probably ever started, and we've been here. I don't even know. But I'm going to let him kind of go into that.
Stop the intro now.
Go.
I'll be very brief. She's, she's said pretty much what needed to be said, but I did want to plant a seed with you guys. We've been really successful the last couple of years, particularly in bringing in prospects, and we've been really close on some, and there's some great stuff on the horizon. About fifteen years ago, I met a guy named Rich Florida. Rich was, at the time, a professor at Carnegie Mellon, which is a pretty decent university. He did a lot of research on economic development. He wrote a book called Rise of the Creative Class. I'd encourage you to get a copy of it, or you can borrow mine if you want. His premise was that communities that seek to bring in intellectuals and creatives do better at bringing industry, because it's a two-way street. The industries are looking for creative employees that can think outside of the box, that are elite thinkers, and they're also looking for places that they'll, they'll feel comfortable bringing their families, because there's things there for them to do that are well-rounded. And I think that's really important, and I, you know, you can prove that for yourselves. Go out and Google Deloitte and Tush. I'm aging myself now, because I think they're just Deloitte now and have been for a few years. But they do a ranking every year, and it's always presented once a year at GEDA, which is our economic development group in the state. There's a lot of things in there. It was, the survey is the top indicators of why companies locate to a community. And it moves. It merges around heavy hurricane seasons. You see things like being near the coast via the tractor. Well, surprisingly, maybe not to this group behind me, but the cultural arts, the culture in a community always ranks very high, usually about mid, five, four, five or six. Industries, like I said, want a place to come where their families can do things beyond just the, the basic necessities. And y'all are doing a great job with recreation. We've got a, you know, a great high school. I think we need to take some next steps in rounding out our, our offerings to, to a diverse group. And, you know, and I would just tell you that I've, I was there for that first show in two thousand sixteen, and it, it was technically rough. I got, I did not apply for the technical director job. I was drafted. I was not qualified. I've gotten better, but I can tell you what's really improved, is Lisa's not kidding, that the level of performances are on par with anything you can see in middle Georgia. What's really different about middle Georgia, as you said, is you can go to Eatonton, and you can see an incredible facility. And it was a public, you know, community partnership. You can go to Forsyth. I know some of you've seen the, the vast facility there. It's incredible. Every one of our competing communities has a facility that's really they can be proud of. And, and I just would like just to think about how to invest in, in that sort of thing going forward. And I'll shut up. Thank y'all for the time. I'd be glad to answer any questions. Y'all know how to reach me. But, you know, I would encourage you, come see a show. You'll be amazed at what those folks behind me can do. And I'll shut up, and I think Lisa wants a couple of them to talk to your briefing.
I know you're probably like, okay, we get it, but this is about the kids. So these are some of our kids. We did Art Day, that one up there. We actually had the high school band. We had all kinds of groups come. We did an Art Day. That was several years ago, back when I wasn't teaching full-time. But this group right here, we did Schoolhouse Rock. I got a grant, and we went into the school, and we performed Schoolhouse Rock for all four elementary schools. So it, this is just, it's way more than just, you know, like I said, the little shows. So it is about the kids, and these kids are awesome, and I have two of them with me today, that they're going to tag team. These were actually our, two of our leads from our last show, and this is Aaron Barnado and Melia Dixon.
Good evening. My name is Aaron Barnado, and I'm a junior at Jones County High School. And tonight I'm going to share my experience with Jones County Arts with you. So in the summer of two thousand eighteen, me and my mom decided to go watch Annie Junior at the Civic Center. I had a few friends in the show, so I thought, you know, it'd be fun to just kind of see. And from the moment it started, I couldn't stop watching until it was over, just to see the people I had known for so many years just turn into completely new people on stage was just fascinating. So the following fall, I began fifth grade, and I decided I would try something new. So I auditioned for Lion King Junior with Jones County Arts. And I didn't know if it was the right decision or thing for me, but I was just decided, you know what, I'll swing at it. Why not? Well, seven years and thirteen shows later, I can tell you, I did make the right choice. So prior to Jones County Arts, I was shy, introverted, and I had little confidence. But thanks to the foundation of support that Jones County Arts and the theater program has provided me, I've had the confidence to go and pursue many different activities, such as the Jones County High School Marching Greyhounds, three years of all-state chorus, and the local praise band at my church. A few skills that I've developed through the involvement would include communication for sure. Through performance and working with all-age groups, I've learned how to express ideas, listen and collaborate with all different kinds of people. Another one would be teamwork. It's taught me how to work with all sorts of people towards a common goal, despite any differences we might have. Time management responsibility, balancing rehearsals, practices and homework, has definitely taught me how to manage my time and to stay committed and give my all. I've got two more. Adaptability. Sometimes things don't always go as planned. For example, last weekend, our performance of Fill It On The Roof Junior, there were some last-minute changes due to a sick cast member. But we were able to figure it out, and Jones County Arts has taught me to adapt and push through when things get tough. And then finally, and most importantly, community. The program has given me a strong sense of community and support, surrounding me, surrounding me with people who encourage my growth, share my passions, and make me feel like I truly do belong. share my passions, and make me feel like I truly do belong. Our community needs financial support for the arts because programs like Jones County Arts empower young people, strengthen connections and create opportunities for growth, creativity and leadership. I would like to sincerely thank the commissioners for considering continued investment in something that makes such a lasting impact on all of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
I did not have time to print, so it's on my phone. I'm sorry. Um, good evening. My name is Melody Dixon. I'm a junior at the high school, and I've been doing it theater at Jones County Arts since I was in fifth grade. Um, I started Jones County Arts because I was in my school's drama club. I was in Gray, I went to Gray Elementary. And one of my friends told me about Jo, about this community theater in our town, and I just knew I had to try it. Because I have always been kind of fascinated by musicals. I always watched musicals when I was younger, like, like the Disney movies. And so, I just fell in love with it afterwards. Um, throughout my experience at Jones County Arts, I've made countless friends and learned so much about the arts. One of my personal favorite shows I've done is Schoolhouse Rock Live. As you can see, I'm in the middle in the blue shirt, um, where me and a small group of high schoolers traveled to each of the elementary schools, and we performed for the third, fourth and fifth grade classes. I learned so much about all of the technical equipment that helps make a show, and I grew close with a lot of the people I've worked with for years. Because of this theater, it's made me want to pursue a career in musical theater when I graduate. The arts are so incredibly important to our community, especially our youth. Theater specifically teaches kids teamwork and responsibility. Every production requires collaboration and accountability, which benefits children of all ages. Theater creates an outlet for people to express themselves in a safe environment that they may not have elsewhere, such as school or their homes. In my own experience, theater has let me improve my communication skills and social surroundings, which used to be something I struggled with when I was younger. Overall, community theater is a necessary and worthwhile program in our community, and I hope that you guys will continue to support us. So, thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you.
Who wants to start? Commissioner Martin?
Sure. Um, I was here for the first show. Um, I think you found a great home in Parks and Recreation, because we didn't know how to make that work, but that gave you facility use agreements, which was great. Um, and then I remember there being a debate over lights, and we got that through. We almost got the sound in the mics early on, but didn't exactly happen, but it came. Um, so, to see where you started and where you've come is just amazing. Um, I, I don't know what to say, but thank you, um, because you did a really good job, um, in a facility that was aged, right? And you brought it to life. Um, very little was happening in the Knox Center, and you, and the crew and everybody that is involved made a, made it an amazing place. Um, it's a no-brainer that we should continue to support. I'm gonna let it go around the table, but you know me, I'm ready to motion and buy some curtains. So, thank you.
Y'all know I love ya. So, even when we left lots of silver, um, litter for you. I know how bad those curtains are. And I remember as a teenager going to school there and watching, Sam will understand too, if you ever made it to any of the plays there, whatever. Um, that's when, um, Ms. Mildred Dye's daughter was the drama teacher there. And I can remember seeing Grease. And I can remember seeing, um, Diary of Anne Frank, you know, on that stage that y'all are bringing back to life. Because it's after we left that school, there's been nothing there to have an, the arts there. So, to see those curtains need to be replaced, because they're still in use after all of these years. I, I want to put new curtains in there, and I want to expand it, and I want to give y'all lots of things, but we don't have all of that to give right now. But we, we would love to help work on that. Um, curtains are definitely a drastic need that it's needed there. So...
We've got a motion in a second, it sounded like, so we could look into it.
Yes.
So...
We actually have a motion.
A motion that we purchase new curtains, and what else?
Do you see how, did Bert check into it, please?
Check into it and come back with curtain options and pricing?
Yes.
Relocation of the screen is...
I know that Georgia State is probably the best place that we're gonna be able to find price-wise, because Sam, is that where y'all pretty much?
They get better than that.
Okay, good. So, Sam can help us figure out some... Second, I'm sorry, second for discussion.
Okay.
What, what was the official motion to do, to have Bert look into the cost for these things that they're asking for?
Yes, the curtains, moving the, the projector, the real projector that needs to go there, correct.
Uh, we got a second. Now, we're on discussion part.
Yeah, just for, well, I will, I will say echo everything that, that Daylon and Wendy have said. Um, I too was there when, um, Greg was the voluntold to be the, uh, sound guy. And at one point, there were two soundboards, and the first time I walked there, I was like, wait a minute, which ones are, I don't know, let's start pushing buttons. It's come a long ways. And, and like Wendy, we, we saw a lot of shows there growing up and, um, when we were in school. And, um, that was actually a school at one time, you know, that was our high school. So, we, uh, so, it, it's come a long ways. The arts have come a long ways. Um, it, it's amazing what y'all have done, no doubt. And we do want to be supportive of that, supportive of that. Um, I was texting with, with Bert a while ago. Some, some people we use, um, in the schools and be up for, um, stages and curtains and stuff like that. And I think, um, yeah, I'm gonna make some calls to try to see if we can't help that out a little bit, get some better, better cost on things. And, um, so, yeah, looking forward to bringing that back. To get to that next level, though, that y'all are talking about, it's not gonna be the, the ten thousand, twenty thousand dollar fixes. It's, it's a real fix. And to go from what we have now to a fine arts center that we need, it's really gonna take a public-private partnership. It's gonna take some grant money. It's probably gonna take, uh, we need talking to the school district, the county, SPOLOSH funds, all of the above to get there, because, um, you know, I've built four fine arts centers so far. And I'm looking at a thirty-five hundred to five thousand seat in the next SPOLOSH and B. So, um, yeah, I know, I know the millions it takes to do that, not just thousands or tens of thousands.
How much does it cost for thirty-five hundred seats?
Uh, between fifty and seventy million.
Huh?
Yeah, so...
That hurt my neck.
Yeah, hurt my feelings too.
But as part of the courthouse renovations, you all would be accommodating parking and things of that nature that later could be used.
Yeah, parking could help. But I was thinking a lot of things when she was talking about the museum. Once we, you know, do some stuff with the, with the courthouse, that'd be a perfect spot to have the museum moved into that area to free up some space, stuff like that. So, yeah, a lot of possibilities there.
Commissioner Wood?
Have to say thank you. Well done, and continue the good work. It's much needed in the, in the community.
I look at, out here and look at our future. Someday, y'all will be sitting up here, I hope. Hope I get to see that time that you do. I'm gonna do something a little bit different. If I could get all the young people up here.
Can we finish the motion before we do?
No, no, we're... I'm gonna do, I'm gonna do the motion while we got them up here taking the picture. What's that gonna hurt?
Look, can we just finish the motion and then they can take the...
All in favor, huh?
Uh, thank you.
Now come on. All, all the young people come up here. I was gonna do I with all y'all doing here, but that's all right.
Jason.
We need to let them just stay in their...
Oh, yeah, we're gonna let everybody fill in.
Fill in all of in here. Tall in the back, short in the front.
You took all my fun out of it. I was gonna do I with all...
You did that on something else. You like started getting people to object.
No. And Miss Debbie's gonna want a picture.
Here, I'll take it. I'll take it. Look, I still need a pause to stand up.
All right, everybody in here.
I gotta stand here. Sorry, guys.
Gotta get on my chair.
All right, we're gonna do this one more time. At the, on the count of three.
Yeah, yeah, come on, Lisa. Push your way through.
When we're ready, on the count of three. I, okay, come on, Greg. I'm gonna give y'all opportunity to do I. One, two, three, I.
Y'all was supposed to say two. You were supposed to say a two.
Yeah, everybody will say it.
Want something else?
That's it. I got an I from everybody. You took all my fun away on this. How often we can do it?
Thank y'all for coming, guys.
Thank you, guys. Thank all y'all.
You took all my fun. I was gonna have all the kids up here and we all just...
I mean, I just can't keep you alone.
This is gonna be one time I was gonna be in the room, but I still got to do it.
Exactly.
Took all the fun out of my I.
It's all right. I'm such a buzzkill. I'm telling you, I've got to like have my taser up here.
All right, we have, uh, for mov, moving on, uh, we've got Jake Woods property, Dr. Kevin Brown. We'll, we'll get the crowd out your way here in a minute. Yeah.
Good evening, good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Can I put this up?
Absolutely.
I'm a little tall. Make sure that light's on, is it?
I got some, I got some tall jeans. Guy named Jake Woods. Yeah, I'm six-five. I used to be six-six. I used to be.
Yeah, I used to be six-three and a half. I'm about, I think I'm about six-two and a half now.
Right, I'm serious. I'm serious.
Doctor, is your light on up?
Yes, sir. Okay. How's everyone doing?
Just fine.
Mr. Rizner, good to see you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Whiten, we've spoken.
Yes.
Um, I'm sure you guys have taught me calling so much, but I'm here for a very important reason. I am the sixth great-grandson of Jacob P. Hutchins. Uh, many of you know who he is or was. And, um, many years ago, I think three, three and a half, at this point, uh, the land was purchased from my mother directly and my distant cousins. Uh, that land has been in my family for centuries. Um, I think we're on, what, two, almost two coming up. Um, I remember my grandmother, who grew up in Gray. I think Maggie Kayvee?
Kayla.
Kayla. She went to that high school. I used to hear stories about it. She played basketball there. Um, great majority of my family is either from Macon or from Jones, or Bev, excuse me. Um, she did, she, she did a lot to hold on to that land. Didn't have a lot of money, but she made sure that that land stayed in that family. Fast forward, we moved back down to the south. They, they migrated up north, came back down. I used to love coming down here when I was a kid, because it was peace, solace. And it's a special thing with Jones County. I don't know what it is, but it's something very unique about Jones. I've traveled, lived, something different here. I'll drive down from Atlanta just to get a bag of chips, just because it's different. And it has something unique about it. The land that Jake might, I, 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 I want to use the term mined, because he was a stonemason. Um, he did it with his Austin, his brother Austin. I'm not sure if you ever heard of Austin Hutchins as well, but that was his brother. Um, I think he at one point, he owned over four hundred and fifty acres of land in Jones County. So, a few years ago, my mother, my cousin Florence, my grandmother's also named Florence, um, Mr. Whiten, um, had the great ability to help get this, uh, state park or county park Jake Woods multi-use. At the time, I wasn't as involved as I should have been in terms of helping. My mother's seventy-four, and her memory is not as what it used to be. So, that's why I didn't bring her today. But she's expressed a lot of concern, family's expressed a lot of concern, that there's been no development in terms of the actual usage and what the explicit nature of the land was supposed to intend, intended to be. And it, it's bringing a lot of, um, questions, if we, if we did the right things as a family. Was the intent well? I believe so. Is the timing correct? The opportunity still present? I'm not sure. Does Jones County have the ability to go forward with what the intent was? Or maybe we should have another look at maybe returning the land back to the family and later on, moving towards a different direction if need be. We're grateful for the opportunity and what you guys have done thus far. But with, with all due respect, we haven't done anything as what we were told. And we have to put it in perspective in terms of the legacy of Jacob Hutchins. I've recently been, um, speaking with Representative Karen Gilliard. On April first, Bill three oh three was passed, the original thirty-three bill in the House. That's now being signed by the governor in the next two weeks. The original thirty-three, are you, you all familiar with the original thirty-three? They were the original thirty-three black state representatives elected to the House in eighteen sixty-eight. There was one name on there that was missing, Jacob P. Hutchins. He was also elected in eighteen sixty-eight. There was a judge, W two, W T McLeod, who did some hanky panky shady business. And he took the seat, but he was removed. Jake Hutchins was properly placed into his rightful position as the elected official at the stateside outside the courthouse. Thank you all for that. He's now being included, per state representative, as the original thirty-fourth, which gives a lot of esteem to Jones County, because their names are going up in the county, in, in the capital. Every single one. And Jake is not gonna be included as the thirty-fourth original. That's how important. I've been working with him. I've been speaking with Mr. Whiten, Mr. Rizner. I've been speaking with a lot of people. We want to, as a family, request that we get a commitment from the county. Or, I'm not sure how you guys do your protocol in terms of motions and resolutions and things, but if you can't do it, it's okay. We appreciate it. But it has to either go forward or it needs to come back. The alternative would be, in retrospect, I would have liked for us to have leased the land to the county in perpetuity for a dollar. And I still would like to, as Mr. Rizner said, maybe an RFP could be a possibility of repurchasing a portion. My only issue of, of my non-original involvement is that I, I should have been more hands-on. I was just, from earshot, I was very busy, no excuse. But, we're here. There should have been some portion maintained in terms of the family, at least an acre or two. It's that important, because when you have that history, even though it's being used in an appropriate light or intended to be used in appropriate light, I still believe that we should have as a family collectively, something owned still in that family's name. And again, if it was simply just doing a RFP, we lease it back to the county for a dollar every hundred years, it gets done. But I think that's important for us. Um, again, I don't know how, you know, you bring up resolutions or motions or things of that nature, but I, I would like to find out if there is the possibility, if the county still intends to move forward, of establishing, again, a committee, or something that has a level of accountability where we can all understand timelines, deadlines, what's going on. We've missed a couple of deadlines. Extensions have been filed. There's nothing really concrete that's, that's happened. So, I think there needs to be a little bit more accountability, a little bit more visibility, that we all can be able to pull up, take a look, meet, um, confer at a different time, or again, it's simply no harm, no foul. And we find a good usage for it. We originally, just, you know, as a family, we had intended, spoke for years about doing a family, building a property for family. And my mom told me about this creek that runs through it. I've never seen it. I'm sure you guys have probably seen it. I've never seen it. But she wanted to build a family property by the creek. So, we still have intended use of, that we can utilize it. Things were different, a little bit better off now than we were. Um, so, we have the ability to move forward if we need to, from a private perspective, to do some of those things. But I think the most important thing for us is to either see this through in its completion, or respectively, allow the family to retain that, that rightful ownership. Um, I heard two things. This young lady right here, she spoke about legacy. There was a young man here who spoke about land. The irony is that what, that's what I'm here for, the legacy of our land. He left that for us. And I can't stand by and let nothing happen. I appreciate you guys. Thank you.
Before, any comment?
Yeah, um, I, I'll be the first to say that this has not gone... Yeah, um, I, I'll be the first to say that this has not gone as, anywhere near as fast as we would like for it to have gone. You're absolutely right that, the, for me personally, it is about preserving the legacy of Jacob Hutchins, what he means to this county, what he has meant to this county, and for the family that will always have that spot. So when you talk about wanting to keep a piece of that property, it was our intent as a board, I know that that legacy and that family ownership, while it, about a little bit, the grant required the county to own it, to be able to get the DNR grant to do the work and all that kind of stuff. So the, the legalities of it was the, was the, the missing point, I think, there. But I think for all of us, it was forever and ever and ever and ever, it will be Jake's Woods. It will be Jacob Hutchins' family's legacy and property. And we want to do that, we, we want to do the honor in what we intended to do, to make sure that that is, is remembered and revered from now on. To hear, I'm, I'm gonna do a lot of research, do my research, I'm gonna do a lot of research on this, because the fact that he was the first black representative from Jones County that started out as a slave and, and worked his way through to one of the most prominent people in Jones County can't be lost. There, it's just not, it's not possible for that to be lost. And I think this board has talked about it from day one, that, that, that is the intent to make sure that it's not lost. So I say all that to say, we have, the process itself has taken much longer than we wanted it to, and I agree a hundred percent, I think, and, uh, that, that we need to have a detailed plan and a timeline with milestones, commitments and milestones, so that there is progress moving forward, and, and that we do what we intention, we intended to do originally. So, Ja, uh, Jason, you have anything as far as how we can set that up? How that we can, and it's not just about making sure the family is comfortable that we're moving forward, but we gotta do what we said we were gonna do. We gotta get the project done, because that's the most important thing, is, is preserving that legacy in Jones County.
That's right. I, so the, the next step in this process, and, and you and I have talked some through all this, but the next step is to have the, we also acquired the one acre parcel there on Green Settlement Road. So there are the, there were the two parcels that, that made up Jake's Woods, and we worked through the process of, um, it was sold from the family to the Nature Conservancy, and then from them to Jones County. So that's the bulk of the property. Then we also have the one acre that fronts Green Settlement Road. The, the next step is to clear that one acre, so that we can access the, the, uh, the two parcels that are side by side there. And, um, otherwise, it's kind of landlocked back in there, but, but the one acre will give us the parking area. And so, um, the next step is to have that survey. We, we had hoped that would be done, um, in January, and, and as soon as we get that, we're, we can send our public works team in to, um, to, to clear that lot. For the, and that'll, that'll have the parking pavilion and, uh, and bathroom facility there. So, um, we sat down, I guess, in, um, maybe December, uh, November, December, and, and came up with the timeline. Obviously, we, um, haven't met that, but we, we do have to submit that periodically to the state as part of the grant compliance process. So, um, so we have a timeline there. It's, you know, obviously, um, three months behind from, from the most recent one we did. But, and, and it has taken longer than, than any of us would, would like, certainly. But, but we do have that timeline that I can send out to everyone.
The one acre lot he, I refer to is actually the mine that Jacob Hutchins started with. And it was bought from a, a distant cousin with, if I'm right, the same, was it the same first name or something? It was ironic when we sort of looked at it, because I thought I was, you know, dealing with your mother, but it was another cousin that was, uh, that actually owned the acre. And it's the, and you can get in there and look, and you can see the rock walls. And it, and that's gonna be, ties in from Green Settlement Road into the landlocked piece that we're talking about with the two parcels there. And, uh, I was out there today, and we had some illegal dumping. I mean, they're dumping all those tires I got, and they're right back again, so we're, uh, our code enforcement's addressing it one more time. But, uh, the thing that we've got, parking lot here is actually the original mine, which will be a parking lot. Uh, the person we got from wanted to make sure that, just like y'all, we'll be recognized. I'm sure there'll be a placard and all, uh, with the history of, you know, uh, Jake's Woods and everything, because you can go all over this county and look, and it's not hard to fi- find his work through our state cemetery, to...
Clinton, Bradley. Up in Bradley.
Comer Road. I mean, it's just everywhere you look is his, you know, and, uh, I saw years ago, this history erased, about in another county. And I couldn't believe it when I saw that. Why would y'all, this is history you're looking at, and why aren't you preserving it? You know, this is an opportunity to preserve this and, and serve history. People need to know.
Yeah, it's coming full circle, excuse me. Um, just with the April first passing of the, the bill for the, the monument for the original thirty-four now, um, you can't time it. It, it happens in due time and purposefully. You can't run from it. It's everywhere. I can see his work, and not knowing everything, I can still see it. It's, 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 it's a historic, um, part of Georgia history. It's a prominent part of Jones County. More people need to know. I, I almost feel embarrassed that I didn't know as much until I started doing more research, even younger. But I'm starting to educate our relatives or our family more so. And as I told either Mr. Rizner or Mr. Whiten, we've been speaking with Tyler Perry's camp in regards to, they're working on a screenplay for the original thirty-three. And he was, excuse me, Mr. Perry was very interested in Jake being the centerpiece. He has a very interesting story, as they all do, but his is a little different in terms of, um, not being included in the original, but he was, excuse me, one of the first, I'm sorry. He was elected in eighteen sixty-eight, and things that he had to go through to petition to be rightfully, excuse me, installed in eighteen seventy, along with the massacre, the Camille massacre that occurred in eighteen sixty-nine, fourteen of those representatives were hung or killed. So it's a, it's a real strong, serious history that, that ties right back to the smackdown of Jones County. And for him specifically, um, his workmanship as a stone, we call him a spectator, basically. He's an operative of actually being what he was, and a master mason at that, is amazing for the fact that it still stands the test of time, to present day, centuries later, almost two, two, two centuries. Excuse me, sorry. The fact that he, uh, took pride in Jones County, and he put his life on the line to make sure that those black voters, those slaves, ex-slaves, were able to vote in what they went through. And the fact that he was able to acquire so much with such, such little time. Passed relatively early, I think it's early seventies, but he accomplished a lot. It's legacy. I, I just want to make sure that, even though respectfully, Mr. Rizner, you, you have a lot of, um, I don't want to use the word hypotheticals, but at this point, that's the only thing I can think of, because we have to have actual. And again, with all due respect, it's okay if it can't happen as the intended purpose. But we can't wait five, seven, ten years, and we're moving out of Snell's place. As I told Mr. Whiten or Mr. Rizner, I have elders who are now in their seventies and eighties, and they want to see something before they go on. And I think it's important that if we all have the same consensus of, of importance, that, um, something is actually put into motion that is quantifiable versus just hypothetical. We have to either acknowledge and act, or we need to revert. And it's, and it's, again, it's nothing wrong with good intentions. Maybe we can revisit it, but I think it would do everyone a disservice if we just let that land sit, and then we have to go into a whole nother rabbit hole of that land just not doing what was intended for its usage. And we have, as a family, have to protect that. I have to protect that as the eldest male. My, my family goes deep into Jones, my, my paternal, my maternal grandfather's, um, grandmother's father was the first black Republican chairperson, Frank Turner Black. I think one of my district representatives was a councilperson as well, or commissioner, excuse me. So we have a long history in, in politics, if you will, in early Jones County, from the, the black perspective. So they did so much, I, I feel a disservice if I did not come down to speak, speak for my family, and hopefully find a resolution where something can happen, where we can, uh, be involved. Uh, it's a lot of history. Uh, we're still gathering, uh, the, the Capitol has asked for his signature, which we have, and we're looking for a photo. Uh, there's a lot of hanky panky with some of the original, uh, Clinton jail that he built. There's a supposed picture of him, but it was removed. That, that's online. It's very rare. So we're still trying to find, develop more history, because they're doing a time capsule, that they're, they're, they're going to do a proclamation of a day at the Capitol where the, um, history of all of the original thirty-fourth, they can have relics or signatures or pictures. So we're still gathering things as a family, so that's something that, if the project was to move forward, that can be included in that history that I'm still learning from some of the elders, the things that were passed on, helping to clarify some of the things of the names. There's so many, there's three Jake Hutchins predecessors, Jacob P., Jacob Y., grandson, greatson. There's a lot. My grandmother comes from the Hutchins. She was a Hutchins. Her name was Ida Hutchins. My great-grandma, excuse me, my grandmother's mother. So, um, again, I appreciate, you know, the opportunity to come and speak with you guys.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
Alright, thank you all. Okay. I guess I'll be in touch.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'm getting ready to do it, so I can get in. Ms. Karen, ladies first. Department heads.
I don't have a whole lot.
Come to the microphone, because people are watching it on.
Thank you. Keep me straight.
I have to.
Oh, my gosh.
Have to get it down. Alright, I'm Karen McMichael, and not a whole lot to report. Went to Jekyll last week for EMAG, and we had a real good conference down there and learned a lot of good, new things. Jekyll was beautiful. But other than that, nothing else is going on. The weather seems to be clear. And we're gonna hope it's gonna stay this way for a little while anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm gonna pick on you in the back. Public work.
How y'all doing?
Good.
Oh, well, you know, we had that storm Thursday night, or, yeah, through Friday. So we got it right at Thirty Trees yesterday, and finished them up this morning. And, uh, got to rake in for the loader today. Done a little something at the sheriff's office, built, uh, graded a pad for them. They parked that Miss Bessie, I think they call it, that big truck, parked under there. Oh, let's see what else we have. I had a little list. But anyway, when y'all do make a decision on that Jake's Woods, we'll definitely move it up to the front of the list. That'll be a priority.
Most of the good survey. I was in there. You got a, you got a big bowl in the middle of it.
Right.
That's the, that's the rock quarry. It holds, it's probably four, five inches deep. You know, right now, since that big storm we had.
Yeah, the one on Comer Road, that's, I've seen that one.
But, I mean, it's right there. Once you come out of Randolph, I mean, it's right there, and you can see the bowl there.
Right. But that's about all I got. Thank y'all.
Bert. I saw you, I saw you beaming.
Yeah.
You're getting pretty good on these requests for your department, aren't you?
Yes.
Pickleball and all that.
I know, I know, but I just want to thank Lisa and the whole JC Arts, uh, for coming out tonight. I mean, clearly, we're having a big impact on those youth, to the point that they're willing to come out and show support for, uh, you know, for what, what they're trying to do over there. You know, just by listening to them speak, I told that one young man, and I would have told the same thing to the, to the, um, young woman that spoke. I said, "You need to save that speech. You can probably turn that in for a grade somewhere along the way between here or college or whatnot."
He probably doesn't need it.
They both, uh, they both did a outstanding job, but, you know, just thinking about Lisa and what she does year-round for the JC Ar- Arts program, and really, all of our organi- organizations and leaders like her, that lead our various things. We're very fortunate to have them, and they make our programs really, you know, outstanding for our youth, whether it's Lisa, and y'all, you see some of the work that they're doing, or we got our track board that's taking a team to the district tournament this weekend. We got our baseball and softball board that are in full swing right now at both parks. The pickleball club's putting on another team tournament this weekend. And so, you know, they're just all doing so many amazing things right now, and, you know, really, they make our department. So we're just very, very thankful to have the volunteers that we have. And I want to thank y'all for, you know, always providing the, the support that they need to be effective. And I know, you know, we don't have all the resources in the world, but y'all have always done a good job of, uh, taking, taking care of us and taking care of those organizational needs. So, thank you very much. A couple little other updates. Liberty Park, uh, we're starting to kind of finally wrap that up. They have both of the structures up. They're, you know, still working on the insides. The concrete path's almost done. Uh, the disc golf is almost complete, so that's really gonna be a, um, a great park when it's done. We're gonna be hydroseeding within the, you know, next month or so, so just looking forward to that getting finished up. Uh, we had the sheriff's golf tournament yesterday, which is always a hit and always a success. They were full as usual. Everyone had a great time. You know, just a good day for Lake Genesco Golf Course. Uh, this past weekend, I don't know if any of you were there, but we had a great Easter egg hunt that was sponsored by, uh, Gray Community Church. We probably had close to a thousand, uh, kids out there. We had two helicopter drops. Uh, from what I was told, there was about six thousand total eggs that were, that were out on those fields. And the pre-k field took probably about four minutes for them to pick them up, but I swear on the elementary field, they picked up all those eggs in forty-five seconds, four thousand eggs. So y'all might need to get them on the Jones County cleanup next year, because I think, uh, you know, they got some skills to pick up some, some things off the ground, so. Also, update on, uh, the Jones County Government Center Gym. We've now started to open that up to the public, uh, like we had talked about before, and we've had a great turnout. We're averaging probably between, you know, twenty and thirty kids a night that are coming out there. And it's more than just an open gym. The guy that we have running it, James Harvey, he's doing what's called skills and drills every night. He's got cones set up, and some of the high school...
The coaches coming in.
Yeah, some of the coaches are coming over there helping, and it's really been a, a great addition to our recreation facility lineup. So thank y'all for allowing us to do that, and I know that, uh, that community is, uh, really, you know, appreciative of that. And, uh, you know, we've always done a good job in Jones County of meeting everybody's needs. Not everybody's into baseball, softball, or soccer. Some people are more basketball, or the arts, you know, but I think that, you know, it's important for us to continue to try to meet all the needs of, of everybody, and that's what's gonna make us a great county to live in and a great recreation department. So thank y'all for everything.
Right, thank you, Bert.
Mr. Rizner, anything?
No, sir.
I need a motion, oh, Commissioner, uh, comments. Commissioner Kitchener?
Um, thank you to everybody for what they're doing, all the staff, all, all of our partners, all of our, our, our community folks. Lisa and all them are doing an amazing job. We said it before. Uh, we'll give a shout-out to Jerry. He called sometime back. You know, we had that big tree that lost in the public works yard, that big oak tree out there, and, you know, we were talking about, what, what do we, how do we replace something like that? And so, uh, he's been talking about it for a while, and so they've got, uh, I think he ordered today the, uh, some new oak trees and some decent-sized oak trees to go back and replace that, so. That's, uh, that's pretty cool that, that we're, uh, I mean, you don't, you don't replace something that's a hundred years old like that, that quick, but gotta start somewhere.
Mr. Wood?
I'll echo what, um, Sam has said about, thank you for all the departments and all that they do. And also, I want to mention, um, yesterday morning, there was a pretty significant wreck at the bypass at Eighteen West. It's turned right there, um, just before seven AM, school hours. Everybody trying to get school buses, this, that, and the other. So there's some line of sight issues there, so if we can arrange a meeting with DOT, work session style, or however... So if we can arrange a meeting with DOT, work session style or however, so the public can attend, I think it'd be very beneficial before we lose one of our loved ones or one of ourselves there because it's, I mean, I think I was talking with some of the deputies and they, they have concerns when they're even out there working traffic or whatever, you know, things they do, they have, it's noted, there's problems there. All right, that's all I have. Thank you.
Jason, can we set up something with Tyler and maybe the sheriff and the other folks?
Yeah, Tyler's, I know I've got his number there.
Sounds like some people need to call Brody Law.
Call, call Brody.
She brings it.
You're advertising, you're advertising, right?
I'm just, I'm just saying.
Do I have to call you though? All right, Ms. Vaughn?
Verbatim what they said, we are very proud of our departments. We're proud of our kids. We do a lot of things, not quite right, but we do a lot of things really dang good, y'all. And watching what Lisa has done with those kids is a really good thing. I'm at work a lot and that building right behind you is where I work at. And I go to leave at sometimes seven o'clock at night and those kids are still there practicing, going in and out of that stage door, onto that little piece of green grass in between my office. And sometimes it scares me, especially when, you know, had Annie with the dog. So I notice you there. I see you. And haven't been to enough of the plays, but sure do want to go to a lot more. I want to get my granddaughter involved in it. Every time she sees that little face right over there in one of the productions, she's like, well, Tallulah can do it, why can't I? So it makes me feel guilty. So, and I do really want to see Jake's Wood. I want to see that dream come a fruition and be able to see rock climbers climbing that rock and just be in a good place.
I did it.
I don't want to see you do it because you might fall.
But I did it.
But, you know, there's just so many great things that we do offer in Jones County and so many things that we could do better. So that's it. Daylon?
Come on, here you come.
It's your turn to talk.
Commissioner Martin, you're up.
Mr. Chairman, after Daylon's comments, we forgot citizens' comments on the agenda.
I did go ahead, I've got ahead, everybody.
Yep.
It's your turn to speak.
Your turn.
We praise.
Oh, y'all did? Ditto, everything.
Citizen comments.
And Commissioner Wood, thank you. Citizen comments. Any citizens tonight?
Oh, I just want to say one thing right quick. We have got a.
Microphone.
Real nice, oh, we've got a real nice fire station now in June, in June.
I'm going up here so you can repeat it.
So I can repeat. We're going to say thank you to the candidate, to the board of commissioners for painting our pink fire station gray. It's beautiful. And we get a lot of good comments about that fire station now.
Thank you. Ms. Vaughn?
I make a motion to adjourn to go into executive session for real estate.
Go say it.
Second.
Thank you, everybody, for coming.